So, good morning and welcome to the Standing Committee meeting for Wednesday, February fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-three. All council meetings will continue to be live-streamed on the city's website. Our first order of business is roll call, with a clerk please take the roll.
Reverend Burgess.
Here.
Mr. Coghill.
Here.
Ms. Gross.
Here.
Mr. Kraus. Mrs. Kael Smith. Ms. Strasburger.
Here.
Ms. Warwick.
Here.
Mr. Wilson. Mr. Lavelle chair.
Here.
Six members present.
Thank you. Our next order of business is public comment. I would like to remind all speakers that the rules of council state that comments are limited to matters of concern, official action, or deliberation, which are or may be before a city council, and profanity will not be permitted. After you are called, please restate your name and neighborhood. For the record, you'll be given three minutes to speak. Our first registered speaker is Naomi Mullen.
Here. Shady trees, not shady deals in Bon Air. I honor my husband, who was a true City of Pittsburgh public servant from the nineteen-seventies until 2021. This is for you, Michael. We, the people of Bon Air, are the real stakeholders. We have paid our mortgages, taxes, and taxes. We have shown up at the town hall meeting to give a resounding no to developing the buildings. We have signed a petition to say we want a green space. According to the Pennsylvania Constitution, the purpose of government is for the peace, safety, and happiness of the people they serve. The Bon Air Memorial Green Space is the solution for the peace, safety, and happiness of the Bon Air community. Without that, there is no valid governance. We do not consent to a detrimental building remaining to decay the community we have built and maintained. Former Mayor Paduta was defeated in less than disgrace. He appointed a panel that claimed the Bon Air Elementary School Building should remain. We, the people of Bon Air, have driven past former school buildings and heard the story of the defecation in the hallways and criminal acts around those buildings. We, the people, say no to any use of the school except to be torn down and create a green space. We, the people of Bon Air, welcome a green space to replace this detrimental building. After having three youths taken out of the building in handcuffs and four others fled, it shows the escalation of the problem there. This was right at my husband's funeral. Retired Deputy Chief Mike Mullen touched the lives of many people. His uncompromising dedication to his sworn duty to provide for the safety of the citizens of Pittsburgh was truly exceptional and one that should be emulated by every firefighter. He loves sharing his knowledge of firefighting and all its many aspects to make our firefighters safer, smarter, and more efficient on the fire ground. Mike knew most of the firefighters on the entire Pittsburgh Bureau of Fire by their first name and was always approachable regardless of rank. If you had questions, he would stop what he was doing to answer it. He worked tirelessly but also energetically his entire career in pursuit of more knowledge. His legacy will serve our citizens and firefighters for years to come. Michael J. Mullen lived his whole life as his obituary so accurately described. Mike was passionate, tireless, dedicated, highly conscientious, and caring. Well done, Michael. Well done. Rest in peace, my friend. Shady trees, not shady deals in Bon Air. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next registered speaker is Danette Viaman.
Good morning, everyone. I was here yesterday and spoke on two mental health topics. The first one, that our children are now learning from machines and the difficulties that's creating for them, and also that mental health should be part of all school curriculums. Today, I want to talk about the topic of the justice system. Prevention needs to be the focus. The idea of punishment for crime is not working in America. We have more people in our jails than any other country in the world, and it's costing trillions of dollars. Research needs to be done to find from inmates what they were thinking and feeling before they committed a crime, what they were thinking and feeling while they were committing a crime, and what they think would have de-escalated those emotions. And I call it a hotline, but it can be given any creative name. That inmates can be the operators for people who are having these emotions and feelings, and these, you know, peer support is working in mental health. We need to start thinking about the justice system in a different way because it's not working. As part of the rehabilitation, these inmates could be the operators, and when they're released from jail, they could also get more training, and they could be part of the team. You know, many communities are now hiring social workers to work with police on difficult calls. While these individuals that were inmates, with their training and their knowledge, they could also be part of that team for de-escalation in the community. The idea of presenting this idea to the community can be done in a very creative way, a cool way in advertisement. You know, personal stories are so effective, and, you know, a person telling their story could really inspire somebody else to make that telephone call. You know, people's lifestyles of crime is not normal. Nobody really wants, or, you know, why they want or feel that they are driven to hurt another being. That's not normal. That's a mental health issue. And it would save trillion dollars over years, not only save lives, but just think of the people that would not go into prison, and their lives would be saved as well. Those who are released from prison also deal with an unspoken mental health issue. They come out of jail, they're free, they're feeling this intensity of good feelings, and they don't know how to embrace it. They don't know how to deal with it. So therefore, they'll commit another crime to go back to prison because they know how to deal with those feelings. That needs to be also spoken about. People who are released from prison and their emotions. We all need to start talking about these subjects. Our society is now in the future, and the knowledge we used in the past to solve our problems no longer are effective. We need to start thinking about our difficulties and create with creative new knowledge and open our minds to and with original perspectives.
Thank you very much.
Can I say one more thing? Having a diagnosis doesn't...
No, ma'am.
Okay.
That exhausts our list of registered speakers. If there's anyone in chambers with us today that wishing to speak, please come forward at this time. Please provide us with your name, neighborhood. For the record, you'll be given three minutes to speak.
Do I stand here or here?
Right there, in the big mic. Yes, ma'am.
Hi, my name is Tony Griffin. I live in Crawford Square. I'm down here for about the permit parking. We have to pay to park on that street. You have the people there to come to the PP Arena, going permit parking. The hour that's left is free, and we don't have anywhere to park. I don't feel that we should not have to pay where we live at to park, and then these people come up and take our parking spots. I talked to the parking authorities. They said that I need to come to city council and ask them to make that time a little longer. We pay too much money in this place and cannot park where we live at. If you have a handicap, you're in trouble, and I do have a handicap. I had a brain aneurysm before, and I thank God for a second chance, but if I have to walk, that's too much for me. I am asking if they can move that time at least up till eight o'clock, and that hour parking wouldn't be really free for them people, this parking at the PP Arena. So, that's what I'm asking, if that time could be changed on that permit parking. They start parking there at six o'clock, and then they get an hour to park, and that's till seven. That's free. We come home, we don't have anywhere to park. So, it's bad enough that you got to pay to park on public streets. So, am I in the right spot? Is these the people I see here, or what happens?
You would please go to, when you exit these doors, go right and leave your name and number with the young woman sitting in the front. We'll follow up with you.
Okay, I thank you so much.
Next speaker, please.
My name is Yvonne F. Brown. I live in the Hill District. Katie Rorvis tires at the top of the hill. She lives down at the bottom, and I do know what she's talking about because anytime there's a Penguin game, you park, they'll even, they were parking in the parking lot of the senior citizens until we, and still I start to fussing. But what I wanted to do today is that, I wanted to explain, in order for you to know about the future, you should also know about the past. And I wanted to explain, I wanted to read a letter that I had wrote, and this was written in two thousand and four. Citizen on March the eleventh, two thousand and four, open hearing was held by city council regarding President McCarthy and his closed-door or secret meeting. I need to explain to you that what had happened is that all of city council, the white men, went to Harrisburg. Ms. Carlisle and Saul Dean did not go. Ms. Carlisle, I filed, tried to file a lawsuit for because she was adamant. She said, "I do not appreciate being at the water fountain to find out that Jen went to Harrisburg, and you didn't let me know." So what it was, that all of the whites went and the blacks didn't go. When I talk about you citizens, when I talk about city council, I've been here twenty-something years. I've been coming. I see it. They have a culture of racial discrimination, racial, and especially if you're dark complected. They wouldn't let Esther Bush speak. They wouldn't let Birdsong, who got a war from the companies. They wouldn't let me speak. But they'll let Tim Stevens, "Tim Stevens, uh, uh, may I continue?" And they let him speak. When they bring people to fight off the police, they bring Tim. But Tim is so busy worried about his children, he said, "I wanted to tell the police, I got children of a mixed race." I got upset because if he's saying mixed race, I found out that his wife is supposed to be Mexican. So what he's saying, if you run into any like-complected children, not dark, like-complected, they're mine. Well, my son is dead because five policemen left my son in Wilkinsburg, and he's on the floor begging for his life, bleeding from the head, asking. He was saying, "I have one lung. I can't breathe. I have one lung." They left my son. What I'm trying to explain to you is this. You're talking about the police actually killing them? My son was begging for his life. He was saying, "Man, I have one lung." Do you understand? When I think about it, I almost sometimes cry because my son knew if they left him on the floor, he was gonna die. You know, they said, "If this troublemaker starts any more trouble, then call us." My son walked in the door. He got knocked out. He had one, he was blind in one eye. My time is up.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
Hi, I'm Bernadette from Beachview. The past weeks, I've been researching scriptures on being humble. It's time for me to be humble. Yesterday, when I was speaking, my TBI was flickering, and I was trying to describe a location on the corner of Nobles Town and Crafton Boulevard, but later, Ms. Kael Smith did sit with me, and I was able to explain, and it's called the West End Trolley Trail. I didn't know, and I should have because my cousin Bobby Hammer, his place, his business is right there. But anyway, I also learned that that was her dream, and that was her doing, and I look forward to that trail going all the way to Sawmill Run Boulevard. I hope it connects to the Riverwalk. Suggestion, down at Station Square, they have little bike repair stations, kind of like the size of that push-button thing over there, like if you have a flat tire or whatever, and an electric station maybe for chairs would be really nice. Very quickly, I need some help. Kids who have IEPs and 504s are not, from my thirty-six-year-old down to my seventeen-year-old, have never been told that OVR, the Office of Vocational Rehabilitation, is, they are to have an assigned counselor in ninth grade to help the family through FAFSA and everything else, and we've been struggling with a mistake that was made, and the school, the people that are supposed to be helping, the college told us she was accepted, and the college is telling us to go to the counselors at school, and the counselors at school are telling us to go to the college counselor, and a therapist at Wesley Service said, "No, you go to OVR." I went down to OVR yesterday, and I cried with relief. This should have been done in ninth grade. These schools are not letting the families know. So I'm asking you guys to get with your connections. I know the school district is separate, but this is something that needs to happen. It's the difference of a child getting to college or vocational school or other type of training and not, and ended up on our streets. So, if you're listening, mayor, get ahold of your buddy at the school district because it's not happening, and I'm grateful for OVR and all the help they gave me yesterday and will be given us. She should have been transitioning all year, and she's having major surgery with her mouth wired shut on the twenty-second for six to eight weeks. I just, I was floored. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there any further speakers wishing to speak? Any further speakers? If not, that moves us on to our Standing Committee agenda. Our first committee of the day is Finance and Law, which is chaired by myself. Our first deferred paper is Bill eleven forty-nine.
Bill eleven forty-nine, resolution authorizing the issuance of a warrant in favor of Max Petrunia, P.C., in the amount of thirty thousand dollars in settlement of litigation filed in the U.S. District Court for the Western District of Pennsylvania.
To approve?
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Affirmative recommendation. Bill eleven fifty.
Bill eleven fifty, resolution authorizing the issuance of a warrant in favor of Tucker Orangeberg, P.C., in an amount not to exceed eight thousand, nine hundred and thirty-three dollars for professional services for an early neutral evaluation related to litigation in the United States District Court for the Western District of Pennsylvania.
To approve?
Second.
Session, seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Affirmative recommendation. Bill eleven fifty-one.
Bill eleven fifty-one, resolution amending, resolution two sixty of two thousand and twenty-one, which authorized the mayor and the city solicitor to enter into a professional services agreement with Campbell Durant, P.C., for professional legal services and expert advice regarding labor matters by increasing the total spend by one hundred thousand dollars for a new not-to-exceed amount of four hundred and ninety thousand dollars.
To approve?
Session, seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Affirmative recommendation. Bill eleven fifty-three.
Bill eleven fifty-three, resolution amending, resolution four fifty-eight of two thousand and twenty-two, which authorized the mayor and the city solicitor to enter into a professional services agreement with Fisher Phillips for legal services in connection with collective bargaining by increasing the total spend by two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for new not-to-exceed amount of three hundred thousand dollars.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Affirmative recommendation. Bill eleven twenty-seven.
Bill eleven twenty-seven, resolution authorizing the issuance of a warrant in favor of Robert Gilbert and his attorney's law offices of Joel Sandstone in the amount of ten thousand dollars in settlement of litigation filed in the U.S. District Court for the Western District of Pennsylvania.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Any discussion?
Discussion, please.
Madam President?
Yes, I'm on my way in, actually, and all the bills that we just held for, to hire legal services for the collective bargaining, I want to hold all those bills, and I know you just passed one, so I want to hold them all, and I don't want them to come to the agenda for final vote.
So we passed Bill eleven fifty-three.
I know, so at the end of the meeting, I'll make a motion to reconsider that one.
Is there a second?
She didn't make the motion. She wants to make a motion when she gets here.
No, she was making it just now. Okay, so we're still on Bill eleven twenty-seven.
Did we have a second on eleven twenty-seven? Okay, second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Affirmative recommendation. We'll come back to eleven fifty-three. That takes us to Bill eleven seventy-six.
Bill eleven seventy-six, resolution authorizing the issuance of a warrant in favor of Ruth and John Banavats and their attorneys Burger and Green, P.C., in the amount of eighty thousand dollars related to the final and full settlement of a case filed in Allegheny County Court of Common Plea.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Session, seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Affirmative recommendation. That will take us on to our new papers, the first being Bill twelve oh eight.
Bill twelve oh eight, resolution amending, resolution number three fifty-four of two thousand and twenty-two, which authorized the mayor and the director of city planning to enter into a professional services agreement with Bronberg and Associates, LLC, for effective communication services by extending the term for one year and increasing the total spend by one hundred and fifty thousand dollars for a new not-to-exceed amount of three hundred and twenty-eight thousand, nine hundred and seventy-six dollars.
Motion to approve? Discussion.
Councilwoman Gross?
Thank you, Councilwoman. I see that the increase is a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, so we're going roughly from about one seventy to three hundred and thirty thousand dollars, and I'm not remembering, and this is extending for an extra year. Is the communication services directly for community outreach, or what is being communicated to whom with a consulting company for three hundred and thirty thousand dollars? I don't, I just don't recall. Is there someone on the line from city planning or in chambers?
I thought this was for sign language interpretation, but I could be wrong. That's what I thought was for...
Oh, really?
Yes.
Do you want to come on up? I apologize. Thank you. It just reminded me that, you know, we are working with planning, and some of us have been talking to them about, like, what are they doing with neighborhood planning versus comprehensive planning, and I just kind of wanted clarification. So could you identify yourself? Thank you for being here.
Sure. Patrick Cornell, Chief Financial Officer for the city. This is for Councilwoman Lavelle's Correct Interpretation Services, ASL Services. In the past, this was funded via community development block grant funding through planning and the capital budget, and this year, with the shift of more of the ADA compliance into the mayor's office, that's where this contract will live. I would add that some of this is for council interpretation services.
I was gonna ask.
Some of it is for, you know, other community meeting services. When we move to rebid in this year for future services, we can have the conversation with the clerk if we want to split out your invoices versus the mayor's office invoices.
Right, right. It is confusing, I think, to us and to the public, why city planning is still the department contracting it when it was many years ago now that we moved CDBG out of city planning. Was it because of the source of funds that it, the contract is there?
So some of it is, is that because ADA, that oversight was still under the Department of City Planning, even though the CDBG funds moved to OMB, city planning was still overseeing the contract.
Do we need them to oversee the contract now?
At this point, no. It'll shift away from them.
Okay. So we need to amend this title?
Because the contract is already in place with this iteration, our best understanding from law is that contracts should include the information of everyone who has signed previously.
But there's actually no active role that city planning is playing in the execution of the contract?
That is correct.
Okay, but that's clear enough. I'm comfortable with that, and of course, we're happy that we're doing the ASL in all of our community outreach. So I appreciate the clarification. That's all, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Councilwoman Wilson?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I had previous conversations with the ADA coordinator, Hillary, that was here, because she was reaching out in terms of, you know, funding for this, and this just seems low. So could you, like, compare to what she was talking about? So could you tell me the, I think the big hurdle for her was that there was, you know, during the time of COVID, the pandemic. So for everyone's clarity, I think the rule previous to the pandemic was, it was a request for an interpreter, and then we would provide that if someone needed that. But then, not clear as to, like, the full change, but everything went online, and we went forward with just making sure that everyone had access. And so then it turned into not a request, and so then that was an immediate new, something we hadn't budgeted before, budgeted for previously. So I just would like to understand, like, the full amount, like, the yearly cost, because this seems low compared to what she was talking about.
So in prior years, it had been, in two thousand and twenty-two, the CDBG funding was a hundred thousand dollars. So this actually is an increase up to account for increase in cost of services. Years prior to that, we had slowly kind of cobbled together different pieces of interpretation across various CDBG job numbers, but I can run a more full report on what actual costs we experienced.
Yeah, I think also, just for clarity, it'd be good to know if we're exceeding the standard, or are we, like, were we not meeting the standard previously whenever there was a request? So I guess that's probably a question for law, but I may actually have some emails about that, but anyway, when this comes back up, it'd be good to have some clarity on whether or not, like, we're exceeding the standard, and just for the public's knowledge on, you know, what the city is doing to meet ADA accommodations. All right, thanks.
Further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Affirmative recommendation. That takes us to Bill twelve oh nine.
Bill twelve oh nine, resolution authorizing the city controller to accept updated financial system account strings and pay invoices for those contracts whose funding sources shifted from the Office of Equity into the Office of the Mayor in the approved two thousand and twenty-three operating budget and five-year plan.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Session, seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Affirmative recommendation. Bill twelve ten.
Bill twelve ten, resolution repealing items and resolutions approved on various dates, which authorize the sale of property in various wards of the City of Pittsburgh due to an incompletion of sale. Fifty-three oh five Broad Street, fifty-three oh one Broad Street, six twenty-four Freeland Street, twenty-nine twenty-two Banksville Avenue, two forty-five East Jefferson Street, and two twenty-three Alice Street.
To approve?
Second.
Session, seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Affirmative recommendation. Bill twelve eleven.
Bill twelve eleven, resolution providing for the sale of certain property acquired by the City of Pittsburgh at tax sales items A through P. Fifty-one fifty-five Hillcrest, fifty-three eighty-nine Cornwall, sixty-four oh six Dean Street, sixty-four oh four Dean Street, sixty-four oh two Dean Street, sixteen, sixteen South Wheeler Street, eight forty Carnival Way, eleven twenty-eight Arlington Avenue, six eighteen Beltsilver Avenue, four thirty-seven Shellfront Street, nineteen oh two Broadway Avenue, three thirty-two Violet Way, one oh six Wabash Street, ten forty-four Marina Street, and seven, seven forty Hillcrest Place and eight twenty-six Vista Street.
Mr. Chair, I think I have an amendment to make on this.
You do.
So, seven forty Hillcrest is to be scratched, I believe, it's in front of us.
The yellow.
Well, the easier way to do would just be make a motion to delete item O.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion to delete item O on Bill twelve eleven.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item O has been deleted. Discussion, Councilwoman Gross?
So, because we did not vote the yellow sheet, so this might not be a problem? So because we did not vote the yellow sheet, so this might not be a problem. But I said, I can't see the full text file of the original bill. But the yellow sheet that we have not voted on has a typo. And so the first property, A, it's unclear whether that is to be sold for $35,000 or $3,500 because it reads 35,000, 00, period, 00. So there's a big difference between $35,000 and $3,500. So I can't, I don't have my full packet like I used to have, my giant pile of paper.
It's right here.
So if someone could look up
Okay.
the original text to see whether it needs to be amended before we finish voting on this. I think we need to know, I don't have the original bill. So if the original bill reads, has that typo, then we can easily verbally amend it now.
I'll have Louise take a look.
Can anyone pull up?
I have it in front of me. Which one, which item is it?
If you pull up the text file, the full text for 12, Bill 2023, 1211. Item A, right at the top. Same in the original bill. So it needs to be amended. So do we know whether we want to sell it for $35,000 or $3,500?
What it reads is, I don't know what that reads. What does that read?
It's, it's, doesn't, it's not a number.
Not a correct number, right?
So item A reads the exact same way in the original file.
So we should amend it to be either $35,000 or $3,500, but we need finance to tell us what that is? Do we need Director Ghula? Or we hold it a week until we figure it out?
Do you want Louise to contact the finance director? You want her to come, you want her to see if she can get the answer, or do you want to?
Sure, we can hold if we, if Mr. Chair wants to just move on.
Assuming, and this is again, it's my assumption, that it's going to be $3,500 because every other one after that reads $2,300.
There was, there is a $25,000 one over there.
So, but why don't we get clarity? Because I don't, I don't know the answer.
I'd prefer to be, have someone tell us for sure.
So we'll leave this bill open on the table and come back to it?
Amendment has been made.
The amendment has been made. Item O has been deleted. Okay, so that takes us to Bill 1212.
Bill 1212, resolution providing for the conveyance by the city of Pittsburgh of certain property having been placed for sale to adjoining property owners in conjunction with the city of Pittsburgh side yard program, items A through X. 2003 Tustin Street, 4806 U Street, 3446 Monroe Street, 3367 Milwaukee Street, 753 Cherokee Street, 3419 Bismarck Street, 3417 Ridgeway Street, Zero Jordan Way, 5166 Broad Street, 536 Mellon Street, 134 Carver Street, 6826 Kelly Street, 7403 Attawell Street, 385 Flowers Avenue, 27 Elmeida Street, Zero Belasco Avenue, 174 McKnight Street, Rear 315 Fairview Avenue, 1023 Salter Way, 2725 Perrisville Avenue, 1230 Woodland Avenue, 404 Moore Avenue, 406 Moore Avenue, and 75 Mulhulli Street.
Question, Madam President?
I'm sorry.
Bill 1212.
1212, this is the one that we took off last week, we took off.
Fifth R. It's scratched from this.
It's out.
Yes.
Okay, but I heard you read it, so I want to make sure people know it's scratched.
It's out. It's in brackets, which means it's deleted.
Further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Affirmative recommendation. Bill 1213.
Bill 1213, resolution authorizing pursuant to Chapter 10, 210, acceptance of gifts to the city of the city code, the mayor, and the director of the Department of Public Safety to accept a donation from Southwest Pennsylvania Emergency Response Group, Region 13, valued at $15,800.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Question, Councilwoman Gross?
I'm sorry, what is being donated? There's a gift that is of value of $15,800?
Yes, I believe it's a financial contribution.
Doesn't read that way to me.
Yeah.
Oh, I did read the cover letter that's attached. Got it. Okay, thank you. That's all I need.
Further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Affirmative recommendation. Bill 1214.
Bill 1214, resolution amending resolution 124 of 2020, which authorized the mayor and the director of the Office of Management and Budget to enter into an agreement or agreements with Compass Natural Gas for professional services relating to the leasing and maintenance of a mobile CNG fueling station by extending the term through December 31, 2025, and not to exceed $378,000 for a new cost not to exceed $756,000.
Second.
Further discussion, Councilwoman Gross?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair. You know that we have gone back and forth with this. I have asked questions every time. This kind of project of DPW and the Equipment Leasing Authority has come up to be purchasing natural gas fueled, mostly waste haulers. So if you wouldn't mind, could we have someone to the table who can speak to it? There we go. Thank you. Come on up. So I voted no on the original bill when we first bought four, if I'm recollection, waste haulers fueled by compressed natural gas, but there was no way to fuel them. And so we had to spend more than we would for any other kind of vehicle in order to also build our own fueling station. But we've since added to the fleet. And I think I have been, I've definitely been asking questions. And I'm not comfortable with us expanding this contract. So I'm, I'm going to ask for a first kind of further description of what we're looking at here so you all can introduce yourselves to the public and give us a little more background here. Thank you.
Chief Financial Officer Patrick Cornell.
Senior Manager of Fleet Services, Brandon Welton. So the Compass Natural Gas fueling station is providing fuel for our environmental services fleet. Currently, we have 12 CNG vehicles with 12 more on the way. There's not really a operational fueling site that's within our region for them to use. So they rely heavily on that fueling site. There was one in the Strip District that closed down, and the Crafton Ingram one is, oh, sorry. And the Crafton Ingram fueling station is, is off of most of the routes, plus difficult to pull in and out of for those large trucks.
And so I remember when I voted no the first time, I said, you know, this seemed like an idea that had maybe like, kind of like missed its window, right? Like some number of years ago, in the desire to reduce city air pollution and create some leadership by changing the city fleet, there was a suggestion to do the compressed natural gas. But that, it was, you know, a day whose, you know, an idea whose day had gone by. And it's certainly in having to fund our own station in order to fuel these new vehicles. I, I didn't think that, even though we know there's a reduction of particulate matter and, and no one loves, no one would defend our far too old diesel particulate matter spewing fleet, especially I'm sure the city employees who have to work on them. And I'm supportive of, of upgrading the fleet and reducing the particulate matter air pollution that we would, you know, have been creating. I don't want to support our local fossil fuel industry. And I don't think that the CNG trucks are really the fleet for the future. And we know that cities are buying electric waste haulers and recycling trucks. We ourselves have already bought some electric recycling trucks, I think, right? Or we've voted to approve them.
They have eight current on order.
Mm-hmm. And so what we're, what we're looking at here is an extension of the CNG contract. Now, I know we've bought the trucks. I know we have them in hand. I have video on my phone of those brand new CNG trucks not being able to make the corners and bashing into people's private property. I have another video of one, I was sitting at a red light on Baum Boulevard, which is not a narrow alley, and watching one of the trucks trying to make the turn off of Craig Street, as if if you kept straight on Craig, you would just dump straight onto Bigelow. But instead, it was turning right to come downhill on Baum Boulevard. And I had to move forward, back up. It was like a five or six-point turn just to make a 90-degree turn on, on multi-lane city streets. So let, tell me about the length of these trucks and their turning radius. What is going on?
So the older ones are about four foot longer than the diesel ones. The newer ones are coming in a little bit shorter. We changed the chassis. And then the additional that are coming, we also changed the body to shorten them up even more. So they're a lot closer to the diesel spec. The electric ones will be about as long as the CNG because of the battery.
So it seems almost like they have an extension behind the cab and the, what do you call it? The compressor, it's not compressor, what do you call it?
Correct, the packer body.
Packer body.
It's where the tanks sit for the CNG.
Right, and so, yeah, it's almost like there's a kind of middle section. It's visually, just looking at it, like trying to, failing to make its turns. And so what are we going to do with routing? So we've got now this kind of multi-layered thing where you have multiple, multiple different trucks in the fleet with multiple different turning radiuses, multiple, multiple different kind of fueling needs, where the fueling stations are. And so this has got to make routing actually more difficult and not less difficult. I'm not an expert here, but do I need DPW at the table too? Environmental Services? Like what's, what's your feedback from Environmental Services?
Speaking directly to the fleet, for, as for fueling, the fuelings all taking place at the same location. They're within a block of each other, the diesel fuel site and the CNG fueling site, as well as the chargers will also be on the same location. So for routing purposes, that wouldn't affect it. The length of the trucks is really a lot more in operators getting more used to the length of the trucks. It will affect some routes, but not that many as it's about a three to four foot difference for the most part.
Some of our alleys are probably 10 feet wide in the turns, right? I mean, the alley that I have the video from the constituent who's filing a claim against the city for property damage is, you know, in an alley from the 1860s. So, and these are highly densely populated neighborhoods that, you know, they need garbage pickup. And we have the obligation to do garbage pickup there. So I, I don't like the trucks. I voted no on them in the past. And then, so let's just speak to the dollars. This reads extending the term through December 2025. So we have to continue to lease our own fueling station that we've now, it's not like we own it. We lease it. We had someone build it instead of building our own. And so, but we're like the sole customer of it, I guess, right? And so it's going from $378,000 for a new cost not to exceed $756,000 through just the next, you know, through the end of 2025, so not quite 36 months. So what is our cost now? If you, you have to fold in the fueling station cost with the cost per vehicle. And I think when I asked at the time when we bought our first four, we weren't even going to hit kind of cost neutral until there were 20 in the fleet. Am I remembering that correctly?
I wasn't around for the first few that we purchased. I can't speak to it. Right now, the cost of the CNG versus the diesel is about, it's about a wash. The crane carrier chassis that we used to buy, diesel, was very expensive. We moved to a Dennis Eagle CNG, so it's about the same price.
I'm going to push back on that. We're not, I'm not talking about the actual cost of the trucks, right? The cost of the gas, our own personal gas station, fueling station doubles the cost of the truck.
So the cost of the fueling station, the lease is, is a bit much. But compared to diesel for 2022, diesel was just over $6 a gallon at its highest point. CNG never broke $3 per gallon equivalent during 2022. It's not as volatile as the fuel industry.
Okay, so we've got one price for the fuel. We've got one price specifically for the trucks. And then we've also got a leasing cost here. I would feel better if the administration had actually worked out these numbers so I don't have to try to do it live on TV to tell me, are we spending more running these compressed natural gas vehicles? And should I vote yes or no on the extension of this contract?
We can look into that.
Okay, I appreciate it. I'm going to, I'm going to give up the floor right now, Mr. Chair. I don't know if any other members have questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Just, I just want to clarify that when you talked about the, that there's no place in the city limits. Actually, the one that you referred to, Giant Eagle Natural Gas Gas Station, is actually within city limits. It's actually in Ferrywood, not Crafton, which is a city neighborhood. At the bottom is Stuben Street, when you go to the right or the left, and the Thornburg Bridge straight ahead is all within city limits in District 2. And Ferrywood is a city, so I don't understand why we're not trying to our best to get our trucks to a city business, somebody who invested in our communities and especially heavily invested in Ferrywood. And that area has been so disinvested with, by, by government across the board. So for me, I'd like to see us make sure that not only are we supporting local businesses, but there, we're working with them to employ people from their neighborhoods. So I'm going to, I'm either going to ask that we hold for a week until we have some things that we can work through, or that we vote no. Thank you.
Oh, yeah, I, I mean, I just sort of, yeah, same type of questions. If we could just get like a very clear, like, you know, how many vehicles? What's the lifespan, you know, for the existing vehicles? So that we can see over the lifespan of these vehicles. And if we're replacing with electric anyway, we've already got eight electric, you know, what's the plan for that to sort of, yeah, just a, a clear cost analysis over, I would say over the lifespan of the existing vehicles as well. That includes like when we replace and what the plan is for replacing, so.
Further discussion? Councilwoman Strasburger.
Thank you. I'll, I'm really just echoing what I've heard already and saying, in addition, well, I am another person who feels uncomfortable with supporting our fossil fuel industry in the region given that the extraction portion of the, of procuring natural gas is not clean. It's not natural. It's not, it replutes our air, replutes our water. And recognizing that the alternative right now with some of our vehicles, these types of vehicles, is diesel, which tail end pollution is much higher. So I have voted in favor of this in the, in the past. I voted in favor of this. I would entertain it, voting in favor of this, understanding that, you know, I don't really believe in bridge fuels, but this actually does seem like an, an opportunity to bridge until we have 100% electric, you know, Environmental Services fleet. So it's sort of just explaining my previous vote for this and my willingness to support it if we are able to get that information and understand exactly where we are in the timing of all of our fleets and our path towards a truly sustainable fleet for Environmental Services vehicles.
Thank you.
Thank you. So Brandon, we have 12. We got another 12 purchased.
Correct.
They're on their way?
Uh, yes.
Okay. When are we going to get there?
So we have five delivered total, two of which are already on our list of in-service vehicles. And then we have four more due by the end of March, and another five due between April and June.
And Councilwoman Gross was talking about not making tons of these. Maybe I missed it. Are these bigger, longer?
They are a bit longer. We're learning through building the spec how to shorten them to get them more comparable to diesel. The last ones we measured were about three to four foot longer than the longest diesel.
That's a big deal. So you're saying it's cost neutral, meaning compared to a diesel. But that's not factoring in the fueling station?
Not factoring in the fueling station.
So the fueling station's $300,000, what's our lease for that? Does that include the fuel?
No.
No.
We, we would pay by the gallon for it.
So we're going to pay $350,000 for the fueling station? And then whatever gas we use, you say it's about typically around $3 per gallon?
Yes.
So what's that, do you have any idea what that works out to be over with the, say, the trucks that we have?
I can get that number for you. We do track it. We do have our port.
Hundreds of thousands, I would think? Hundreds of thousands, I would think?
About that.
Right. So this is costing us probably about a half a million dollars more in order to be more efficient than diesel, somewhere above 500.
I think that once we do the math, we'll, we'll see actually a cost savings on the CNG versus, especially looking at 2022.
Okay, because of the cost of diesel?
As well as the, the cost of the vehicles and the grants that we receive for these specific vehicles that are on their way in.
They're all the same size, these vehicles?
The CNG are a little bit longer than the diesel.
CNGs, I mean, but they're, see, but they're all the same.
Correct. They're all 25-yard Packers on the same chassis.
They don't make them in different sizes.
They, I mean, they do, but we would have to change operations. That's, that's on DPW if that's a possibility. But the Packer body itself is a 25-yard. That's what we need to pick up the current routes that we have, that size Packer. Otherwise, the chassis is the same chassis. The only thing that could change would be the body.
Can't change. I mean, we have these paid for. We can't send them back.
Correct. They're already being built.
Okay. All right, that's all for me. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else first round? If not, second round, Councilwoman Warwick?
Yeah, just a question because again, because I'm new. So why, if we're moving toward electric, did we buy 12 new?
Currently, there's not the capacity to charge more than eight electric Packer trucks. They require a great deal of electricity.
And, and we can't cancel an order if we've got five? I mean, I get that if we have five delivered, but then there's eight pending.
So we are in contract with the companies that we ordered them from. So the ELA has already signed a contract. The vehicles are already been ordered, and the majority of them are actually already built and are just in the final stages of manufacturing.
Oh, are they being built specifically for us?
Yes.
Like made-to-order type, yeah?
Yes.
More or less. Okay. Thanks.
Any further discussion? If not, I'll simply add, it's my understanding, I could be totally wrong, that the electric vehicles are equally as long as the other ones, maybe even an inch or two longer because of the battery. So either way, we're going to have the routing conversation that's going to need to take place, even when we become, we become more efficient, just.
Once I was done, now that you brought that up. We, and since I'm not on the ELA, so I'm kind of like just throwing it out there for those of you who are, that if we had a different staffing levels, we could run trucks that weren't as big in the Packers, right? As I think you just threw in, right, to get the, what was the size of the Packers? That you said we are, we are required to do, what we are buying for?
25-yard.
Is that 25-yard, is that the largest Packers that they have for?
It is, it is not.
But they're, so they're very large, right? And again, some of our city alleys are from the 1860s, right? And older cities that have smaller rights of way and tight corners buy smaller trucks. But if you buy smaller trucks, you generally, you need more crew, right? You need more people doing those runs. And so sometimes we're cutting off our nose despite our face, right? So we're, we're trying to save money on personnel, and then we're spending more on this equipment. And we're doing fewer runs on trucks that really are not built for our streets, right? And so I just, I, I just need to point that out.
Yep.
So, right, and so we, there's a, this is deep discussions that we have at other times and not in the middle of a weekly agenda, but I'm, I, I think I heard Councilwoman Smith suggest that we hold the bill for a week to get more information, so I'm, I'm going to make that motion to hold one week.
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, the bill will be held one week. That moves us on to Bill 1215.
Bill 1215, Resolution Authorizing a Cooperation Agreement or Agreements Providing for the Transfer of Funds Not to Exceed $9,465,991 to the City of Pittsburgh Equipment Leasing Authority for the Purchase and Leasing of Vehicles, Equipment and Accessories, Equipment Support Infrastructure and Professional Services for Use by City of Pittsburgh Departments.
Your man?
No, still in the finance law.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Councilwoman Gross, Councilman?
I'm just kind of like, I, I really didn't catch this stuff like when I read the agenda when it first came out. So now this is really kind of making me ask. So this one is specifically, it says uses for all city departments. So is this including the trucks that we were just talking about? In this 9 million, 9.5 million dollar purchase, Cooperation Agreement?
It is not. The trucks we were just talking about are previous purchases.
Okay, right. And just for citizens, since I'm also not looking at the text file here, the, the vehicles are all listed in the text file if citizens want to go click on this legislative link, 2023?
This, this is our standard authorizing agreement that lists the total of things like nine and a half, 9.5 million dollar number, that is simply reflected of what's in operating in capital budget. It's our yearly bill.
So since I have ELA at the table, in, in years past, when I've gone to try to find the specific lists of vehicles, it's been hard to find. Can I ask that it be attached here? So that it's actually in Legisstar? Because it's hard to find. You go to the city website, you can't find it. You go to the ELA website, it's not actually there. It's not, if it's not in the text file, you know, maybe you have to dig through the middle of a budget hearing. Maybe it was just on paper, and it's, it's kind of hard to find, and it shouldn't be. Where, where is it?
It is listed in the capital budget documents.
Okay, so there's a, a $9,465 budget line that I would know if I were a citizen is this budget line that has the list of vehicles, or?
It's, it's the Capital Equipment Acquisition Project, which is all of our vehicles that move from the city to the ELA. We can certainly get a list to attach to this.
I would love that. I love that. And then I'll stop talking about it. So if we can get that list, we can attach it on Tuesday. That'd be helpful. I appreciate that. And then it, and then again, for the public, then it's in the legislative record. And so I'm just, I'm just noticing that the entire time I speak, you're only looking at the back of our heads. That too for Councilwoman Warwick too. When we're on, when we're on camera, it's just the back. There I go.
He's making people angry. That's all you're going to get.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Bye-bye.
Councilman Wilson?
Yes, I just had some questions around. I know you may not want to have this right now, or maybe you do. Basically, we're about to spend nine and a half million dollars on, how many vehicles?
Actual number, well, it's around 147. I'm not sure of the math on this paper is correct.
Okay. And I know there's been a lot of discussion around getting to net zero in terms of our fleet, even in the prior Bill 1214. So I'm interested to see what the plan is with that. Is there a, is there a guiding post that everyone's going by on the Equipment Leasing Authority as to how many we're buying versus?
The Equipment Leasing Authority in the past did pass an agreement that they would purchase the most fuel-efficient vehicle available if, if it were, would fit operations, and we would have the ability to operate it, maintain it, fuel it. Right now, with every vehicle purchased, we take a look at what's available versus what we can put in our fleet. Unfortunately, there aren't as many fossil fuel-free vehicles such as EVs available in every class that we'd like, so we're just continuing to monitor it. We're hoping for some more vehicles to come out this year after Work Truck Week and the US Auto Show.
So this nine and a half, this would purchase new vehicles, 147, you said?
Yes.
Okay. And you said there used to be a, what'd you call it?
The ELA adopted a policy. It was, it was right after the administration did previously.
So is there, is that policy still in place?
Yes.
Okay. And does that, when they're making decisions and votes on that, do they, you know, are, are they keeping track of that? Can we see that?
I, I believe it reflects on all of the minutes as well as within their bylaws.
Okay, I'd like to have a full count of what that, what that looks like. And, you know, so I'd like to, to hold this bill and then next week have an understanding of what those numbers look like and where the city's going in terms of their fleet to get to net zero. Is that possible?
Take a look at what's available. And, and again, you know, as we find more vehicles come out, we're constantly looking and talking with departments on whether they can operationally use them or if we can fuel them and, and maintain them.
Okay. But you think we can roughly get a breakdown of, well, we could talk offline about this, but basically, you know, what these new 147, would some of these be the compressed natural gas?
Yes.
I mean, outside of the Packers?
No.
Okay, so we're not doing outside the Packers? Okay, and but then, you know, in terms of what are regular, gas, hybrid, fully electric, that whole breakdown and like what the barriers are to, to going fully, you know, electric? Maybe it's cost, maybe it's the availability, does that whole breakdown?
Yeah, most of it's availability and the ability to put charging infrastructure in. Charging infrastructure is very expensive, and it's not quite where it needs to be technology-wise. You know, you can't, you can't recharge a vehicle within five to 10 minutes like you can refuel a vehicle. It takes hours, so there's an operational concern there in a lot of departments, especially ones that work more than eight hours or drive, you know, more than 40 or 50 miles in a day.
Okay. I guess this is a good discussion for during the, the budget hearings when we do that. But if that's possible, I'd like to, to see that before I take a vote on this.
I can get you a breakdown of what we currently have, as well as what's on the plan for the coming year, and, and provide that before next week.
Okay. And I imagine it's broken down into what the department can, you know, use what vehicle? For instance, like I see a lot of small PLI vehicles out there, and they look like they're either fully electric or, or hybrid.
Yes, PLI is almost 100% electric. We're fielding the last 15 that should put them somewhere between 90 and 100% fully electric.
Right, yeah, I'd like to see some of those goals too, like what's, basically, what's the overall plan? If we know that we can get, if we know that, that the, the job requirement can be done in a vehicle that isn't, you know, doesn't have to be on the road for, you know, hundreds of miles? And, you know, how far are we to getting that department 100%?
I could try to put something together for you.
Okay, great. I can make the motion now or after?
Question, Councilman Coghill?
Brandon, let's talk about the refuge, charging strictly electric vehicles. They can't really make the routes as to what we need them to do. When, we need them to go out to the landfill and come back. We're having issues with electrically charged vehicles, at least the bigger ones, correct?
We don't know where we're at yet. We're, we're too new. So we're going to test them. We, that's why we purchased them as recycling vehicles. Recycling vehicles don't have to travel to the landfill. But we are putting DEP stickers on all eight of them, and Environmental Services has agreed to run some routes to the landfill so that we can test their ability to make it there and back.
We need them to do their route, go to a landfill, come back.
And on some days?
That'd be satisfactory.
Some days they may have to finish their route. So we do, we have vehicles currently that do their route, go to the landfill, come back, finish their route, and go back to the landfill, so.
So the recycled trucks, are they also 25-yard?
Yes.
So they're just the same size?
Yes.
Okay. So when are we going to know if we could, when are we going to test it?
Once we get them in service, we'll start testing right away and we'll.
We have none in service right now?
We're still waiting for the electric ones to be built.
Oh, we're still waiting for them to be built. Okay. Any timeframe on that?
The chassis vendor, so the truck itself, is due to be in production in mid to late March. And then we expect them to arrive at the body company, which is where they'll get the Packer, by May 1st. And then it's, on a normal one, it's, it's six to eight weeks turnaround. But there could be any number of things when it comes to testing the Packer versus the electric system, so it could delay it, but we expect anywhere from six to.
And how long does it take to fully charge one of these vehicles?
We're estimating from zero to full, it's about 10 to 12 hours. But that's on a DC fast charger, so that's the fastest capable charger that we have available. That's what's being installed for these trucks, one for each.
So, so once it needs to be charged, you could charge it at half and just, you know, take it back out and you'll get half the?
Half the range.
Half the range, right? Okay. But it takes eight to 12 hours to fully charge?
10 to 12 hours.
And that's 10 to 12 hours, and that's rapid?
That's rapid. That, I mean, that's, that's the ability of charge that we're going to be capable of.
So basically, you got to, when you're done with it, at the end of the day, it's got to charge overnight?
It's done until.
We have, we'll have enough charging capability for how many?
Each vehicle will have an individual charger, so there'll be eight chargers, eight vehicles.
Eight chargers, eight vehicles. All, all stationed at the same place?
Yes.
Okay, which is where?
Right next to the Environmental Services location. It's often referred to as the tow pound lot.
Oh, 31st Street?
Yes.
Okay, got it. Okay, that's it for me.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. And I just want to men. I just want to mention that on the ELA, we do have two members of council that sit on the ELA, and I want to thank them for their work on this. But I think overall, I think it's the whole process of the ELA that I'd like to, for us to look at and see if we can do something a little bit different, especially making sure some of these things are public before they're purchased, so. With that said, I think, thank you, I know that you do a ton of work on this, and, I mean, everybody talks about how much, how knowledgeable you are in the area. But I think for just the public and for councils' own notification, I think we need to look at that process and to know that we do have members on there. And I want to thank them for their time that they spend on there. It's Councilman Coghill and Councilman Lavelle, two very different opinions, but two really great representatives, so, so we have, we have good say on there. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Wilson?
Motion to hold one week.
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, the bill will be held one week. That takes us to Bill 1216.
Bill 1216, Resolution Authorizing the Issuance of a Warrant Payable in Favor of the National Association of City Transportation Officials for Yearly Membership Dues in an Amount Not to Exceed $31,250.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Question, seeing none. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, affirmative recommendation, Bill 1217?
Bill 1217, Resolution Authorizing the Issuance of a Warrant Payable in Favor of the United States Conference of Mayors for Yearly Membership Dues in an Amount Not to Exceed $17,511.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Question, seeing none. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, affirmative recommendation? Councilwoman Gross, we do have Bill 1211 still open on the table. Director Ghula has joined us.
Thank you. I was going to try to get your attention and say that my staff found an attachment that says the purchase price is clearly $35,000. So, yeah, yeah. So there's another attachment. Director Ghula, I appreciate, if you want to come on in, since we dragged you down here, I apologize.
That's okay.
Just as we were discussing the trucks, my staff kind of ran a, the second piece of paper in here for clarification. If you just want to introduce yourself and confirm which number we've got here, it'd be great.
Sure. I'm Jennifer Ghula. I'm the City Finance Director and Treasurer, and I can confirm, I just spoke to the staff, and it is $35,000.
That's great. So since we have the original bill open and we made a motion to delete, can I still just like amend that bill with another motion to amend?
Yes.
Well, then the Madam Clark has got it all right. Okay, so motion to amend Bill 2023 1211 under Item A, purchase price. I motion to amend to make that $35,000.
Second.
Second. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? The amendment has been confirmed. Any further discussion on the bill as amended? Seeing none. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Affirmative recommendation. Thank you, Director. Madam President?
I'd like to make a motion to reconsider bills. Can you tell me all the numbers? Let me see.
It's 51 and 53?
Yes.
Bills 5, um.
1151, 1153.
1151, 1153. Just two? I thought there were three. I think there's three. 1127, is that one? No, that's a settlement. Okay. Okay, 1151, 1153.
Second to reconsider. There's been seconded. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the bill is back on the table.
Thank you. I'd like to call the solicitor to the table. Good morning, solicitor. We're in your green for St. Patrick's Day. It's coming up, huh? Oh, that's right. No, that's, that's March. Never mind. I'm Irish. I mean, I'm Irish.
It's coming. It's coming.
But, um, anyway, um, thank you for being here and, um, I just want to ask you a little bit about these bills and I know that Councilman Wilson would like to also ask some questions, uh, is there any part of these bills that are related to any, any further arbitration other than the police bills?
Uh, so, both of these contracts, um, are amendments to prior contracts and they are open-ended to other, um, they're, they're used for all unions, so.
I, I want to be honest with you, part of this bothers me every time these come up when there's something for the unions, I don't know why we don't have, with a staff of at least forty attorneys, why we don't have someone on there who can do these things, it's not as if this is new to us, it's not as if if, you know, collective bargaining is something we don't do, it's something we do regularly, and so we should have somebody on staff so we're not spending this kind of money and we can actually maybe actually pave some roads and some other things that we're supposed to be doing, um, for me, it's, it's concerning that there's not somebody on staff that, I know that you have some people that do handle some of these things, but somebody who's considered an expert at this point, you know, that, instead of having to pay for another consulting fee, um, but I also, I know that Councilman Wilson has some con- some comments and some questions, but I wanted to know if there was any part that is for, that will be used for anything other than policing, so specifically, will there be, yes or no?
So, I know that, um, I wanted to apologize, I, from my understanding, there was an executive session yesterday that I wasn't present for, I didn't know about, that's on me, that's on the Law Department, I think-
That wasn't supposed to be for these bills, that, that wasn't for these bills?
That was for the next two.
Okay, so I was present for the one for twelve-one, I will say, I think we're getting into areas that I would be in a position where I am waiving attorney-client privilege and I am concerned about doing that, so, um, but that said, I really, I don't think we had a chance to have a fulsome conversation about it because there was lots going on that week, so, I am certainly very, um, supportive of the idea of holding this bill, having another executive session and then we can do a real deep dive into all of these issues.
I'm gonna be honest, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not fond of having the executive sessions all the time, because I think when we're talking about contracting and some of the things, I think the public has a right to know, are we using these, these dollars for, you know, all contracts, are we using them for just policing, um, is there something specific that you're concerned about and why you're extending it, I think the public has a right to know that much, I don't, I'm not saying they have to right, right to know every single detail, but they have a right to know what their dollars are being spent, how their dollars are being spent.
I, I completely agree about that, I think it might be better for us to have a deeper conversation so that you kind of get all of the context and then we can decide what is, would not be waiving any attorney-client privilege, um, for information that we could provide to the, to the public.
Solicitor, I have, I have great respect for you, so I'm gonna shut my mouth right this second, and I'll turn it over to Councilman Wilson. I'm sorry, is that okay? Mr. Chair, sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, uh, Solicitor, thanks for being here and thanks for, uh, you know, waiting in terms of, you know, bringing this back to the table, because I, I, I do think this is important, um, I think the Council President was, was, uh, talking about the point that I was trying to unders- trying to make, uh, but originally I was just trying to understand, reading the bill, the, the actual text of the bill, yeah, which union is being, um, which union, uh, is involved in this, in this contract, or I, I guess specifically, you know, Campbell Durant, or, uh, what the other name is? Fisher Phillips, you know, specifically, is it which, you know, which, uh, what's it called, the bargaining process, what's the, the collective bargaining?
Collective bargaining, negotiations and then the arbitration.
Okay, so, so this is just for negotiations, not arbitration?
No, again, we, these contracts are broader than that, they cover all labor negotiations with all of the unions.
Yeah, so that's what I like to, to get, dig into is really, where are the, where is the money going, for what union, uh, contract that we're working on?
Yeah, and again, I'd love to get into that in more detail and happy to, but I believe that by talking about it here at the table, I'd be waiving attorney-client privilege, so I'd like us to save that and for an executive session, again, I wish, um, you know, I am happy to do, I'm happy to hold this bill and for us to have that meeting and then I can answer all of your questions.
Is it always gonna be attorney-client privilege to, um, keep that, uh, I mean, would it be against attorney-client privilege to actually have which, uh, union we would be using?
I think there's-
I know this is an open one that you're talking about, but if we changed that rule and we did individual contracts with, uh, outside representation, like is there a future that we would see?
I definitely think we could come to some kind of information that could be given to, um, client, I think we just, wi- in the middle of this, without having to give you all of the con- like, I want to give you context that is privileged, so I would, in order for me to answer that question, I want to make sure you understand all of it, and in order to do that, I have to give you information that's privileged, and then I think we could say, hey, is this information, is, you know, are you okay if I state this information, this would not be privileged and we could release that to the public?
Okay. All right, thanks.
Coghill?
Thank you, hi, Director, uh, I guess, I was under the impression that the four-hundred and ninety thousand from Campbell and Durant, that's strictly police, I believe, is it, did you say you can or cannot tell us that?
I said the contracts are written for all, um, all unions.
Oh, so that four ninety-
The contracts are not restricted.
And this three hundred could be EMS, it could be over-the-board?
Yeah.
Got it, okay, and, we don't know what portion goes to which.
I do, I do know, but in order to get that, we'd have to get into kind of the details of, uh, the cases.
Okay, I just was under the impression a four ninety was FOP, I guess, you couldn't tell me that if you knew that.
What I'm saying is that the contracts are written so that they are open to all labor issues.
But what you can't tell us is exactly which amount is to which union.
Yeah, and I can tell you.
You can, but you can't.
I, I can't, I just can't tell you today.
Kids got that? All right, now that's it for me, thanks.
Thank you.
Any further discussion?
Yeah, I just want to briefly say, I think that's what Councilman Wilson and I were both asking, if he's going to be used for something other than the FOP contract, so you're saying, yes, they are?
It could be, yes.
They could be, okay, that's, I think that's what we were trying to get to.
Okay.
Okay, so, we'll hold for an executive session, thank you.
Wonderful, thank you, thank you all.
I really wish we didn't have to do executive sessions, because sometimes I hear the public saying, why did council vote this way, why did coun- but they don't know what you, we're hearing in the back of an executive session, so they think we're all idiots, we don't know, they don't know we're listening to people that have a lot of knowledge in an area that maybe, you know, we didn't, they, we weren't able to share publicly.
Thank you very much, Council President, I appreciate it, thank you, thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
So you want to make a motion, Madam President?
Motion to hold for an executive session.
Both bills, eleven fifty-one and eleven fifty-three.
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, both bills will be held for executive session. That exhausts our first committee of the day, um, and I apologize, I meant to do this at the very, at the very beginning of our meeting, but I do want to take a moment to just acknowledge the young men from Central Catholic who are here with us today, learning about our government and who are clearly very enthralled in this wonderful conversation that we're having.
Can I just add that we have, um, council members that attended Central Catholic, um, in my, in recent memory, Reverend Burgess, Councilman, uh, Corey O'Connor, and Doug Shields, um, and my brother was the Vice Principal of Central for about twenty years, so you, you have a lot of history here in the city of Pittsburgh.
Go Vikings!
That was Reverend.
I also have three sons, the Brederichs.
Oh, that's right, that's right.
So, welcome to city council chambers, we hope you actually do get something out of this experience, um, with that, we need a motion to approve the invoices?
And not what not to do, right?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion, seeing none, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, invoices are approved, need a motion to approve the P-cards?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, seeing none, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, P-cards are approved, that'll take us to our Public Safety and Wellness Committee chaired by Councilman Kraus, we have one new paper, Bill twelve oh seven.
Bill twelve oh seven, resolution authorizing the issuance of a warrant in favor of Vonderhouse Gil Germin Shepherds, Inc., in an amount not to exceed seven thousand, nine hundred dollars for a narcotic detection K-9.
Bruce? Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion, see, discussion, Councilman Warwick?
Oh, I just wondered if there was any relation between this and then the gift, the fifteen-thousand-dollar gift for the K-9 that we've-
I don't believe so.
Okay, they're just too separate, okay.
Any further discussion, seeing none, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, affirmative recommendation, that'll take us to Public Works and Infrastructure Committee chaired by Councilman Coghill, our first new paper is Bill twelve oh two.
Bill twelve oh two, resolution, amending resolution three oh nine of two thousand and fifteen, file number two fifteen, two thousand fifteen, fifteen sixty-eight, title, resolution accepting the location and proposed rights of way for parcels two C three hundred, two C four hundred for the Lower Hill redevelopment site infrastructure in the second and third wards, sixth council district.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Question, seeing none, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, affirmative recommendation, Bill twelve oh three?
Bill twelve oh three, resolution taking appropriating and condemning by the city of Pittsburgh for public roadway purposes, certain property in the fifth ward of the city of Pittsburgh owned by German and Francois Barnouy-Voe located along Schindly Farms Terrace and authorizing the payment of just compensation and necessary and incidental acquisition costs thereto related.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Oh, sorry, Councilman.
It's all right, it's all right.
Question, seeing none, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, one abstention, as I live on the street affected, uh, land use, that takes us to Land Use and Economic Development Committee chaired by Councilman Wilson, our first and third paper is Bill five ninety-two.
Bill five ninety-two, ordinance amending the Pittsburgh Code Title Nine, zoning code, Article One, zoning districts in general, Article Two, base zoning district, Chapter nine oh four, mixed-use districts, Article Four, planning districts, Chapter nine oh eight, public realm districts, Article Five, use regulations, Chapter nine eleven, primary uses, Section nine eleven point oh two, use table, and Section nine eleven point oh four, use standards, Article Six, development standards, Chapter nine fourteen, parking, loading, and access, Chapter nine fifteen, environmental performance standards, and Chapter nine nineteen, signs, and Article Eight, review en- enforcement, Chapter nine twenty-two, development review procedures, and Article Nine, Chapter nine twenty-six, definitions to create three new base zoning districts and other zoning amendments.
Motion to hold one week.
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, bill be held one week, that takes us to our new paper, Bill twelve nineteen.
Bill twelve nineteen, resolution, amending resolution eight seventy-seven of two thousand twenty-one, which authorized the mayor and the Department of Permits, Licenses, and Inspection to enter into an amended agreement or agreements with Ath Power Consulting Corporation to provide customer service and soft skills training to the department's staff, the amended agreement shall be in an amount not to exceed fifty-eight thousand, one hundred and fifty dollars.
Motion to approve discussion.
Second.
Director, if you'd, uh, come to the table, that would be fantastic, looks secure, thanks for coming. You just re- or state your name for the record.
Before the director goes, we need to reread the title of the bill.
Yeah, it's a different amount there, right?
Yeah, I heard fifty-eight, but it's actually-
Resolution amending resolution number eight seventy-seven of two thousand twenty-one, which authorized the mayor and the Department of Permits, Licenses, and Inspections to enter into an amended agreement with the Ath Power Consulting Corporation to provide customer service and soft skills training to the department's staff, the amended agreement shall be in an amount not to exceed seventy-eight thousand, one hundred and fifty dollars.
Thank you, Director, if you could state your, uh, name and title for the record.
All right, sir.
Sorry, we need a formal motion.
Motion to appro- sorry, motion to approve discussion?
Second.
Question, Councilman, thank you.
Sarah Kinter, Director of the Department of Permits, Licenses, and Inspections, um, as you know, we have worked really hard to ensure that we have appropriate technical skills in our department to administer and enforce the codes, the property maintenance and construction codes, um, but we need to balance that with appropriate soft skills to communicate to customers effectively, and sometimes that communication has to do with giving bad news, we issue code enforcement violations, we need to appropriately explain that, and so this contract has been, um, really lifting those skills for our code enforcement officers, our, uh, building inspectors, um, to have, uh, appropriate conflict resolution skills, customer service skills, um, and we've been working with Ath Power now for a few years and this is an extension of that contract as we continue that work, uh, customer service skills are not a one-and-done, uh, it's something you have to practice all the time, uh, and we've had, I think, good, good success and, uh, good growth of those skills in the department.
We have Exodus happening. Well, thank you, Director, it's always a special day in city council and chambers where we have PLI at the table. Uh, can you tell me, um, just, I just had one question about this, which is, so these are soft skills, um, so this training to everyone that has to interact with the public, or you, or you have a, a new, um, community engagement strategy?
So it is for the full staff, it's for day-to-day work, um, we usually split up the, the different, um, groups, just based on the, the type of work that folks do, so, code enforcement officers would be in a different training than our application technicians because they're doing a different type of work, different type of skill set, um, but it, it's intended for all PLI staff.
Okay, all right, thanks.
Coghill?
Thank you, Director Kinter, so this is basically training people how to nicely give bad news?
Yes.
Is that right?
Yes, in part.
And who does the training?
So Ath Power has three, uh, you know, I could be saying that incorrectly.
No, I think you're right, I saw, it was earlier, right?
Eighth Power, Ath Power, um, they have three trainers that have been dedicated to the city, um, and, uh, yeah, it's about sometimes giving bad news, um, sometimes it's really just, you know, helping people through the process who are maybe the first time they've ever interacted with PLI, they're doing something for their, their one-family or two-family structure, um, and we might not see them again in a few years, uh, until they're ready to do something else, so, uh, helping all sorts of customers.
That, that's it, yeah, thanks.
Thank you, well, I'm just, I'm very much in support of this, I think spending the time to make sure that anyone who's interacting with the public has soft, I don't actually love the terms off skills, because I think they're as important as technical skills, but has the skills to be able to work with the public, especially in this department, can do wonders to create a reputation for working with the city, whether you're a resident and you're trying to put in a garage or replace your garage, or whatever it is, a fence, to bringing actual business here, if we're gonna keep our population above three hundred thousand, which is so critical, we have to have, be on our A-game, like with every time that we have an interaction with the public, so I'm so happy that you're investing in this and in your and our employees as city, as a city, and I would love to see that extended to other, um, departments as well, as much as possible, if you have a good experience with this, um, entity, so, thank you for what you're doing and just wanted to state that.
Thank you, Councilman Gross?
Thank you, Director, glad to see you here, I, I was a little distracted by our guests in the audience, so I wanted, I mean, you might have already covered this, I apologize, but, um, do, are we applying these for, um, interacting with both residential customer citations and commercial customer citations?
Correct, it's for all customers, and, and the skill set is relatively the same, um, but the time spent might be a little bit different.
And did, if you, you know, said it already, I apologize for making you repeat it, but could you say a little bit about, kind of how, like where the difficult conversations, kind of like what are the frequency of each kinds, you and I have talked many times in the past about, especially women-owned businesses, but a, a lot of small businesses, my district has a lot of small locally-owned business, and the, and, and we get the cases at my council office because of the frustrations and the difficulties that small operators, let's call them, have getting through all of the hoops, is that, how, how will this be helpful?
That's a great question, so, we are, um, working with folks to go through the, the construction inspection process and the code enforcement process, so if we've been called out on a complaint, we might be issuing a citation, our inspectors are obligated to explain what we cited for and what you have to do to abate that violation, and we should be really clear about that, and there's some really important skills in explaining what the, what the citation is under code, we should be able to point to something in black and white and say, this is why it's a violation, then here's what we're gonna expect for you to abate, you're gonna go through the permit process, or, you know, it's in a historic district, so you have to go through the HRC process, um, so there's that communication, and then there's, um, the soft skills related to sort of stress management, you know, when you are issuing a lot of citations, our inspectors have a hard job, um, and there's an erosion of compassion and empathy that can happen over a period of time because you're just sort of going through the motions, but this might be- But this might be the first time this customer's ever experienced this. So we need to acknowledge that, reflect, remember that, And then as, uh, public servants, be able to explain the process like it's fresh each time. So these trainings help to bring that to the forefront, put us all on the same page, Uh, and make sure that we, we as an agency and as public servants are really serving our customers and our residents.
So it's, I, I'm eager to see how this works, and I hope that it works really well, Because we get those calls right. So imagine you're, you know, a resident, residential property owner, um, but, you know, The first thing that's coming to mind for me is the commercial, um, business owners who, You know, when they've called, when they're calling us, they, they are, they're almost like heartbroken And so confused and so frustrated and don't know what to do. And I'm just now imagining, as I'm listening to you, that maybe they were told, but they couldn't hear it Because they were so upset. Um, and, but then it's, it creates this cascading level of work For people in our organizational chart who are already overworked, right? So that we're getting called, but we don't know what happened, because we weren't there, And so now we're calling your department. Sometimes I'm calling you directly and pulling you away from stuff that is far more important for you to do, So that I can learn and understand, and then, or my staff can learn and understand A conversation that they weren't in, and then recommunicate it To our, you know, either residential constituent or business constituent. So, gosh, it'll be great if this works.
So, uh, if I could respond, Councilwoman, uh, this is an amend and extend of a contract, So we've had these trainings before, and I think that they are useful and successful for the department. We had a training last year prior to launching the LED Safety Ordinance, Knowing that we'd be working directly with child-occupied facilities, especially maybe smaller ones That aren't, that weren't familiar with those rules. Um, and really did some, some role-playing essentially with the inspectors and what that would look like. These are new citations, this is what it's going to look like under city code. Um, here's what you need to do to abate. And I think it really prepared the, the code enforcement group to take that on Um, and feel comfortable about it, because issuing citations for something brand-new Uh, is, you know, something that we needed to, to talk through.
Sorry, especially something that impactful, so, that's, that's great news. So I'm definitely supportive, and, uh, we look forward to hearing more about it.
Thank you, any further discussion? Council, I'm sorry, I thought you were talking about, what we were just talking about, I'm sorry. Madam President?
Thank you. First of all, Director, I want to thank you, because this, two weekends in a row I bothered you on a Saturday morning, And you responded, and you were so pleasant, you could probably give the training yourself, I'm sure. Um, but I ju, but I just want to say thank you for that. But I do want to say, I think part of the frustration that our residents are feeling, Uh, because a lot of times when we can't do something, we say, it's the state code, it's the state law, it's federal law, it's this, it's... But they see, I border the most boroughs. So what they see in my area is Mount Lebanon, Upper St. Clair, Green Tree, Following all the same state codes that we follow, be it not having any of the issues that we have, To the magnitude that we have them. So they feel like it's just a way that we just don't care about the city residents, And that we allow them to live next to some of this stuff. And some of that is also our magistrates. Um, and I do want to say that we have a magistrate that's been doing, um, holding people accountable and increasing things. So, I do think that he's been helpful, and the community feels that, they feel that. Uh, and I also keep saying, the one thing I wish we would do is have somebody at the magistrate, Or any housing court, from our Housing Opportunity Fund or from the URA, To give resources that we do have available, so maybe somebody's not, somebody who can't fix, Truly can't fix a railing, or truly can't fix a roof, they call Anthony Coghill. But they truly can't fix something, that they really, um, have the resources, and that we connect them to those resources. And I know some of that is occurring, go ahead, Joyce.
Yeah, thank you, uh, Council President. Uh, we issue a, a letter with all of our citations, and say, here are resources, But getting that flyer at the time you're getting a citation is not, is not helpful, uh, at that time. So I would agree that at the time that you're in court and we can have a face-to-face interaction, Directing people to services is helpful. Um, the URA has been a good partner, um, but it's, it, it needs, uh, Further points of intervention or touchpoints.
Intervention's a good word, okay. But I do want to say that, I think that there's, some of those things are occurring. But I am looking forward to, our solicitor, city council solicitor, Dan Friesen, Has actually written some things on, you know, blight, you know, fighting blight and, and doing this. So he is going to help us and work with you and work with others To come up with ways that we can better address some of the things occurring in our neighborhoods every day, Because we want our residents to feel as valued as the residents in Mount Lebanon, and Green Tree, And Upper St. Clair, and all the other areas that we border, Councilman Coghill borders some of the same. And I mean, you can see, it's, you know the second you drive into the city, and that just wouldn't be that way. Um, and they allow some of their properties to become most blighted that are closer to ours. And so, you know, it's, it's, it's almost such a... One of our boroughs, I will just say, put up signs saying no Pittsburgh residents allowed on their park, And then they put up another sign saying we can't make a turn this way, can't make a turn that way, to keep us off their streets. And so yet, we, you know, work with our, you know, them all the time. And I'm just saying, I want our residents to feel that valued and, and more, Because I said I'm going to start putting up signs too. So, well, I can tell you got the one sign down, because I threatened to put some signs up Saying that they weren't going to be able to use our parks either, because we have some amazing parks. But anyway, for the most part, we have great, um, borough, you know, neighbors, including Dormont who helped us with swimming. But, you know, I, I, I know you see what's happening. And it's, I mean, when you're dealing with this blight, and I, somebody told me that they're doing some, a, a series of some Articles on some of the housing in Pittsburgh. And when you see those things, year after year, time after time, it doesn't matter how kind you are When you're, when you're calling somebody and you feel so frustrated. If you're living next to filth and blight, you're angry, and it doesn't matter how kind, you know, somebody is about it. I just want to say that, so. So, I appreciate the efforts, but I want to make sure that we go a little bit farther. Thank you.
Do anyone else first round? If not, second round, Councilwoman Gross?
Thank you, and Councilwoman Smith, I'm, I'm supportive of what you're talking about, But I also, I also have to acknowledge in these conversations that we have, you know, Polarized opposite markets in a lot of the city, right? And so we have blight and abandonment, but we also have like under-investment, But then we have hyper-investment and gentrification and displacement. And sometimes it's the same actors, kind of, that are the guilty parties on each end. So in my district, the speculators are weaponizing, is that the kind of word we use now, right? Using, um, citations and reporting in order to, um, get properties Out from under families, especially seniors. Um, and so we have a lot of colloquial, kind of anecdotal storytelling about, you know, the, they, no, It's, it's after the fact, we can't do anything about it, but the gentleman who lived for decades in the house next door to me, You know, it, I'm told by constituents, you know, oh, somebody got his house from him by like, because they had all these citations. So, they literally are actively calling and reporting on drooping gutters or cracked sidewalks, And we need to be vigilant that we're, you know, we're not allowing our neighborhood's wealth to be stolen from them. But in fact, both the blight is stealing wealth from our neighbors and residents, As well as this bit of like over-investment, right? And aggressive, um, home buying, you know, in my district, we've been tearing down those signs, We buy ugly houses, and we buy signs for decades, right? But then, you know, I, I get, we all get text messages, we get people knocking on our doors, We get, you know, trying to buy our houses from us. So, um, I just want to make sure, it sounds like offering assistance, um, isn't, is, it should be helpful To both the kind of over, uh, over-developed or over, like, hyper-intensive development areas And the underdeveloped areas, so. I just want to, I just need to, always need to acknowledge that. Appreciate it.
And just, just to respond to that, yeah, I absolutely understand that, because it does happen in our districts as well. But I do think that there needs to be a balance, but that doesn't mean people, even if somebody's poor, Doesn't mean somebody next to you has to look a blight and filth. You can be poor and clean up your, clean up. You can be mentally ill and take a help and advantage of some of the programs out there. And, but I really think it's us connecting them to some part. But a lot of times, the blight is the city of Pittsburgh's owned properties. And so, that, to me, that's inexcusable, and we shouldn't allow our residents, We shouldn't be contributing to, to our residents' ill health and their mental stability, instability, Because we're allowing them to live next to filth, properties with rodents and, um, I mean, you've seen them all. I mean, they're horrific, and some of them have been going on for decades, literally, where they fall down on their own. So, that's not okay. And so that, for those things, we need to be more proactive. And I think Councilman Coghill and I are looking for additional dollars for DEMO, So that we can get some more money, um, and, and I don't care where we take it, Because honestly, at this point, it's affecting, uh, the quality of life and the health. And it contributes to some of the crime and some of the things happening in the city of Pittsburgh. If you don't think that there's something to that broken window theory and people Living next to filth and trash and not having any, uh, why would they feel valued? We don't make, we don't make them feel valued at all. So with that said, I just think that there's a whole conversation here, I'm glad that you're training people, But I think we also have a responsibility here to, to help rid the blight, the, the neighborhoods of the blight. Thank you.
Councilwoman Coghill?
Thank you, Madam President, and, uh, I couldn't agree with you more. DEMO, I mean, you know, I've seen, my, my district is not riddled with them, but we do have some. I have some on the docket to be taken down this year, I hope. But yeah, when we have these homes that are falling down, I think we need a lot more money in the demolition. I know Councilman Lovell's argued for it in the past. You have, how much in the budget for DEMO?
Uh, I believe that we received, uh, additional ARPA funding for 2023, that was about $3 million.
Two, three million dollars.
In addition.
We did that.
Yeah, right.
Thanks to, uh, council.
And that was on top of what?
I believe two million.
So you got maybe five million dollars.
Right, so the Pago is exclusive to emergency demolitions for 911s and fires and things that might happen. The ARPA is for those, the worst of the worst of our 1,800 condemned properties.
Right. You, you know, my, I have a question as to, like, um, these LLCs, they're everywhere, right? We can't find them, you know, um, they're in New York, they're in Israel, they're all over the world. So we can cite, cite, cite. We hope that it goes to the owner of the property, but most times it probably doesn't, and it's LLC, they probably... What happens eventually if we have, how many citations does it take for us to, what, bring them to court? Or, what's, what's the step as far as, like, if they're not responding and paying the citation, what happens?
Yeah, so we've been taking a different approach in the last two years. We have a, a LexisNexis tool called Accurate, In which we try to search for appropriate places to serve the citation and show that we can give legal notice. Um, and we've been, also been working with, uh, the magistrates to use constable services So that we can, again, attest, yes, this, this entity did receive notice, So that we can issue fines and, and, uh, request that. There are non-responsive owners, however, uh, that we're not able to contact, And those remain in violation until unfortunately the city is burdened with potentially having to, Uh, perform a demolition due to an unsafe structure, if it gets that bad.
Yeah, see, I've suggested that in the past, I had a couple properties by accident. I said, well, we'll get that thing condemned and knock it down. Soon as the homeowner or the property owner found out that, oh, this is susceptible to be demoed, You know, then they moved it, and they sold the property right away. We cannot condemn anything unless it's deemed unsafe.
Unfit for human occupancy, correct?
That means no water, no electric, can be condemned. And, uh, um, structure-wise, we, we, we're not permitted to go inside and inspect it, are we? I mean, we can't, we can look from the outside.
Right, so we have to get right-of-entry to enter a private property. We can, uh, issue citations based on what we can see from the public right-of-way Or from an adjacent property owner who will allow us on to the property. We can't, um, you know, triple anyone's Fourth Amendment rights, even if they are not responsible.
Of when we do condemn a private property? As to, like, they turn it around quicker, is there any type of history? Have you, have you, have any data on that?
Uh, so when you say turn it around quicker, like, have we condemned?
They finally, they ignored all the bail, all the fines, but they see you're condemning it, And in that language says, you know, we have the right to knock this building down, And I feel like they jumped to it.
Yeah, so, I, I don't have the data off the top of my head. I'm sure we can sort of crawl through what we, what we have in terms of citations that were issued, When it got condemned, and then whether the ownership changed in some period of time. Um, but, you know, I can, I can think of a handful of times when that actually happened.
Yeah.
Where someone came out of the woodwork and said, actually, please don't demolish that. But by then, if we're demolishing it, it is the worst of the worst, and it's too late.
Right, right. Yeah, I'm just looking at it as a scare tactic, for people who ignore the fines.
Yeah.
So, um, okay, that's, that's it. And, uh, thank you again for meeting today, doing our own intervention today.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? If not, I have a quick question, although I think I know the answer. Councilwoman Gross mentioned sidewalks. What role does PLI have in enforcing sidewalk maintenance?
That is a great question. So there's actually two entities that, uh, enforce sidewalk rules. The Department of Mobility and Infrastructure and PLI. PLI does, to the extent that a sidewalk property maintenance issue is causing a hazard, tripping hazard, Uh, something to that nature. The Department of Mobility and Infrastructure can also issue citations for sidewalks That don't meet their specs and standards and require that they get a permit through DOME for a sidewalk repair.
In enforcement, which is, I'll, I'll call it a third category, if say someone was parked on a sidewalk, Moving, forcing me to have to walk in the street would be the police, correct?
My understanding, yes.
My understanding is...
Parking authority?
Currently, our rule, and I need to re, reread our, our rules, um, our code, excuse me, just so I'm, I'm fully aware. But you're not supposed to park on sidewalks unless you can prove that you're getting out of the way of harm. Is that about correct?
It's out of my, my wheelhouse, apologies.
Okay, I'll figure it out. Yeah, okay, so Department Attorney is saying that's essentially right. So, okay. Uh, Councilwoman Warwick?
Yeah, I just said, well, since you brought up sidewalks, oh, um, so what is, so, I mean, we, I, I have a very specific, You know, the request that we sent into PLI, where there's two sidewalks on either side of a street in my district, And the buildings, they enter, they're sidewalks that run along the, the parking areas behind both buildings. Well, the sidewalks are just a mess, and actually someone from Councilwoman Strasberger's district tripped and, and Her, you know, her father tripped and hurt himself, and that's what's... Anyway, we reported it, and what, what we heard from PLI is that these are, like, group-owned, You know, the buildings are not owned by one entity, and, um... Because I had wanted to contact the owner directly, right, to just say, look, to be neighborly, can you, you know? But there doesn't seem to be anyone to contact, so what, wh- where do I go from there? You know, I had my staff sort of try and figure out who I could contact.
Yeah, if, if you wouldn't mind forwarding that to me, we should still be issuing a citation. So is this a condo situation?
It's not condos, it's businesses, but it's like group-owned, like the building is all owned by multiple people and, and whatnot.
And, and there should still be an owner designated by the county that we should be able to cite. So I'm, I'm a little bit confused with that, so if you wouldn't mind forwarding that to me, I'd appreciate it.
Yeah, sure.
Yeah, see, I think we should have, like, PLI, kind of like, quarterly meeting. We, I should actually conduct that, so we can have all this information that the public always wants to know.
Absolutely, if that's what you want to do.
No, I suggest in the past, I'm just like, these questions always arise about PLI. Uh, we need more bills that, you know, for contracts that, you know, you're not on the agenda as much. We need to, we need to have more, more soft skills. Yeah? I think so, I think so.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Affirmative recommendation, thank you, Director, for joining us.
Thank you, Joyce.
That takes us to Innovation, Performance, Assets Management, and Technology Committee, chaired by Councilwoman Warwick. We have one new paper, Bill 1218.
Bill 1218, Resolution Amending Resolution 727 of 2021, Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of Innovation and Performance On behalf of the City of Pittsburgh to enter into an agreement or agreements and amendments thereto With Vision Point Systems to obtain Twilo Flex Support Services To meet the needs of the City of Pittsburgh at an additional cost not to exceed $15,600.
Uh, motion to approve a brief discussion, I was going to explain it, but Director, since you're here.
Second.
Second, discussion, Councilwoman?
Yeah, go ahead. I mean, I was gonna, yeah, so you're here, so.
Good afternoon, Heidi Norman, Director of Innovation and Performance. Uh, thank you. So Vision Point Systems is support for Twilio, Which is an online, uh, phone communication system that many of our call centers use. So for example, the 311 services, um, the call center within permits, licensing, and inspection, Even the IMP IT Help Desk, um, uses Twilio. Vision Point Systems is the only authorized servicer outside of Twilio itself. However, their services cost about 50% of what the Twilio support services cost. So we would like to move over to this, um, support organization In order to reduce our support costs, um, for our overall spend On these communication services within the IT call centers.
Is that, oh.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Well, I was just going to say, yeah, just to sort of, so when, yeah, with, with, with... I was just gonna say, yeah, just to sort of, so when, yeah, with, with software, you have like the software and the software maker itself services that software, but then there are also other companies that they partner with that can provide those services. And in this case, that, that's what this is. And it sounds like for, that the partner is able to provide the service for less than the Twilio.
Correct.
Twilio makes the software.
Right. So it's actually saving us money overall.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
And just quickly, was there an RFP issued?
For Twilio?
Yeah.
It was originally acquired in 2020 when we all went home due to the pandemic and has since been renewed through the standard procurement processes.
And then you mentioned that for call centers, plural, so how many centers?
Let's see, we have...
Other than 3-1-1?
Certainly. Let's see where I have it listed. 3-1-1, IMP Service Desk, Finance, PLI for our one-stop, DOME, DPW, and Environmental Services. The multiple departments.
Okay, thank you.
Further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Affirmative recommendation. That moves us to our final committee of the day, Intergovernmental and Educational Affairs Committee, which is chaired by Councilwoman Gross. Our first new paper is Bill 1204.
Bill 1204, resolution adopting plan revision to the City of Pittsburgh's official sewage facilities plan for 7227 Hamilton Avenue.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Affirmative recommendation, Bill 1205.
Bill 1205, resolution adopting plan revision to the City of Pittsburgh's official sewage facilities plan for 707 East Street, 17th Ward.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Question? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Affirmative recommendation, Bill 1206.
Bill 1206, a resolution adopting the plan revision to the City of Pittsburgh's official sewage facilities plan for Meriden Street residences project, residences project, which will involve the development of eight single-family residences with associated utilities. The site address is 117, 121, 125, and 129 Meriden Street, and 114, 118, 122, and 126 Hallock Street in the 19th Ward.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Affirmative recommendation. That exhausts our agenda. We do have meeting announcements. This afternoon at 2:30, yeah, this afternoon at 2:30, council will hold a cablecast public hearing on Bills 1157 and 1181 as they relate to the renaming of Herschel Park and Charter's, Charter's Fears. Speaker registration close at 1:00 PM this afternoon. Next week, council will hold our regular and standing committee meetings on Tuesday, February 21st and Wednesday, February 22nd at 10:00 AM. Speaker registration will close at 9:00 AM the day of the meeting. To register to speak at these meetings and hearings, please fill out the sign-up form on the council meeting webpage. You may also call our clerk's office at 412-255-2138. Madam President.
Thank you. And I just real quickly want to say, I'm making some changes on the committees so the public knows. I'm moving Councilwoman Coghill to Public Safety, to be now the Chair of Public Safety, and Councilwoman Cross will take over the DP Public Works and Infrastructure Committee. And with that said, we're also putting the committee together for the, with the mayor, just to address the violence, well, it's actually to hopefully reduce the violence in the City of Pittsburgh. And I think with yesterday's, the violence here yesterday, I think it's really important that we talk about how we're working together with the school districts, the school district and other schools around the area as well because our kids are all together out in the communities. They don't care where they go to school, they're together in the community. So I think, I think we all feel like such a sense of urgency and our community feels such despair. And talking to people yesterday that how hopeless they feel, people are feeling, and how just traumatized by everything that's happening in our city. And I think that, you know, we're all coming together. And I just want to assure the public that we hear them, we know that there's a lot of pain, we want to help be a part of that solution and give some hope to the community. And I do think that this committee, even though it may sound simplified, you know, when it started with the curfew and now it's, you know, we're talking about resource centers, I do think having the conversation is helpful. I do think that there are programs that are going into homes of kids and that they're really having an impact. So it's finding some of those programs that are really working and doing those kinds of things. And how do we then duplicate that across the areas that are most needed? But I think that there's going to be a lot that this committee's tasked with. And although I know who I'm putting on, I'm waiting for the mayor's office to, to make that announcement for their side. So they're going to make the general announcement. But there will be a role for the public and there'll be a role for every council member, even though we can only have five people on the committee and only, I think, three of the five are going to be members of council. There is going to be a public process. And what I'm asking is for, I'm asking the committee to please consider having all the council members do some work under their committees that you chair. So how can this, how could technology play a part in what we're doing to help stem the violence? How can, you know, land use and, and facilities and city parks and all those things play a part in working together for some solutions? But there will be some public processes and some public hearings. I hope that the committee, you know, task us with withholding. So, but I want the public to know, we are working on it. We do hear you, and we are working desperately to try to have some answers before the weather breaks. And we know crime typically increases when kids are, you know, not in school and time's free. But I, but I just want them to know that, you know, we, I feel so badly for what's happening. And can you imagine, I mean, I was reading the media, some different media sources yesterday, and just going through all the things, kids, that are affecting kids with, you know, human trafficking, child abuse, you know, foster care. I mean, just across the board, the things that they're dealing with on a regular basis. I mean, it'd be one thing to deal with any one of those things one time, but to deal with it as a way of life is something we have to say, okay, this is not okay. We all have to get involved, and we all have to help our kids, and we all have to be part of the solution. And I think that we're going to get to a place where we at least help decrease some of that stuff and, and do, I think right now we need an intervention. I mentioned this before. And I think we're going to have some intervention with all of us working together. But long-term, I think that there are some long-term solutions that hopefully will have a better impact on our community. You know, it's just, it's heartbreaking. I don't have the words to say how sorry I feel for what people are living through. So I just want to say that city councils, you know, trying our best to do what we can to, to help stem this violence. And we know it's also affecting businesses. It's affecting kids, it's affecting businesses, it's affecting our schools and the success of our schools and, and our city and people wanting to live here. So it's having an effect on everybody. And so we need everybody to come together. And I do want to thank the Pittsburghers. There were so many people that reached out to us and said, we love this idea, we want to help, how can we help? Even if it's, we don't, even if we don't like this idea, maybe you could do this instead. I want to thank them for reaching out and coming up with some solutions and coming up with some feedback because my office was inundated with emails and calls and text messages, Facebook stuff. So I want to thank the Pittsburghers for, for reaching out and to let people know we're working on it.
Thank you. Councilwoman Burgess, I saw you come onto camera.
I'd like to say that, you know, I appreciate the leadership of the President. And I do also pray for the family of the Westinghouse students, both those who were shot, and all the Wilkensburg and Westinghouse students who attend Westinghouse for their peace of mind and, you know, after this stress. As an older person now, you know, I reflect on the past. And this is not the first time we've lived through this. Although things are bad, they were not as bad as the crack epidemic, crack epidemic, where two or three blocks of home was the single most dangerous place in Pennsylvania for a while. And what has remained the same, and I, I want to make sure we come back to this. We have allowed certain communities to be concentrated for. And in Pittsburgh, almost every four concentrated community is African-American. And I always think about this, and we don't think about this. Every time we build a market rate development on the South Side that has no affordable housing in it, we are helping to continue this legacy. Every time we build these market rate units in a strip district with no affordable housing, we are continuing this legacy. We are, every, and we don't, you know, we celebrate those things, not realizing that we're all part of the problem. The banks that don't lend to African-Americans are part of the problem. And so the kids are the consequence of our racist, segregated policies of our country, of our city, and of our state. And so I feel bad for the kids, but this has been, you know, 300 years in the making, and we've not gotten this right. We do do some things that help, but the root cause of this, and I want to say, make sure that we're all clear, is our racist, segregated policies that force primarily Black and Brown people to live in hopelessness in concentrated war zones until we fundamentally decide to put the half a billion dollars needed in Homewood and the, you know, half a billion dollars needed in the Hill, until we decide to make these low-income communities a priority. And, and or, you know, and at the same time, building affordable housing in the strip district, in Lawrenceville, in South Side, in Squirrel Hill, in Shady Side, in the segregated, in, wait, please, in the segregated communities, until we decide to consciously desegregate these communities economically, I think we're going to have these problems over by ground law day. It'll be over because we have not changed the economic reality of these families. And until we do that and give them hope for jobs and upward mobility, I think this is going to continue.
Thank you. Councilwoman Coghill and Madam President.
I just wanted to make a quick note. I think, started out a curfew centers, now resource centers. The, the idea, I think, is to hit these younger people, get at these younger people. I had two murders in Carrick over the past month. One shooter was 17, and the latest was 14 years old, young boy, 14 years old. So, yeah, I mean, we know guns are a problem in our society. There's no secret about that. But I do feel the younger the person are, the more dangerous they can be, I just think. And I think that's who we really need to reach out to. But I just wanted to mention, and also, I had one in Brookline juvenile as well. So it seems like most of the murders now are committed by juveniles.
So I just want to say real quickly that, you know, I hear everything Reverend's saying, but I do want to say that if I don't acknowledge that Shorter City defies everything you just said, they will be very upset. They have worked extremely hard to keep their community, predominantly Black neighborhood in the City of Pittsburgh, has the highest homeownership in the entire City of Pittsburgh with about 90% homeowner occupied homes and low crime. And they would be very upset. They, but they work hard in their community to make their community as amazing as it is. And if you've never been to Shorter City, you know, do yourself a favor. I know Reverend, you have been, and go visit and see what an amazing Black community looks like because it is, they just do an amazing job. And it is them who, they do the stuff in the community, not city council, not, you know, their elected officials. We help do what they ask us to do and what they direct us to do. It's, but it's them calling the shots, believe me, giving the directive. So I do want to say that. But I also want to say that when we talk about guns, you know, this, I think we have to look at the underlying issues. And I mean, it's easy to say it's gun violence, gun violence, gun, but there are things that, and there's things that we cannot control, but there are things we can control. And so like locally, I'm just curious, you know, I don't know what the protocols are for 3D printers. And do we allow them to be used in libraries by young kids to create, you know, to make the guns? Because I'm hearing there's a lot of that. And in our schools. And I think it's trying to find out the policies that are helping to contribute to that influx of guns on the streets. And, and so even though I think, you know, that has to be part of the solution, I, I also think we have got to get to these underlying issues where kids are living in such horrible and deplorable conditions for some kids and, and, and other kids, you know, that are affected by it, whether they're not living it or not. Those are the kids that they go to school with, they play with in the community, see sooner or later in the work environment. And just in general, I just think we need to address this issue in general. And just, I think, helping to find the underlying solution, you know, causes and addressing those is, is going to really make our society better for all. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else from members? If not, oh, it's Councilwoman Strasberger.
I agree with, with what everyone has said. We have to address the underlying causes. We can't, while we can't program our way out of this, we also have to do everything we can in our power to, you know, to provide opportunities to youth. And, and I also just wanted to point everyone to a new report from the Bureau of Alcohol, Tobacco, and Firearms and Explosives, the first time in 20 years that they produced a report around the proliferation of stolen guns, untraceable weapons, and other deadly devices that show that had we been able to succeed in passing and enforcing our lost and stolen bills that we passed 10 years ago, 15, I don't know how many years ago at this point, and at the state level, that certainly would make a dent in at least having the, the data and the information to be able to trace some of these, the proliferation of guns that are flowing into our communities. It's, it's not a panacea, but it certainly does help. And straw purchases. So there was a really great, I shared this on Twitter, but there's a really great interview on WESA's Confluence yesterday that covered this and gets into the details. And I just wanted to publicize that and have everyone listen to that if they can. There's, there's also some news media that covered this new report as well.
Thank you. I actually did review the report. The most critical thing about it is they actually have the data. Prior to that report, they really didn't have the data to prove it. Now they actually have spent 20 years collecting the data, which allows you to have a better understanding of what's happening. But thank you. Any Councilwoman Warwick?
I think just because I do want to mention, I, I had a meeting on Friday with the team from Reach, which is doing a lot of the violence prevention work, or, you know, they have a large contract for that. So I, I do just want to acknowledge the work that is being done by so many community groups, right, across the city, whether it be through violence prevention or otherwise. And, and just underscore that if those groups are in our districts, how important it is for us to, you know, support the work that they're doing, highlight the work that they're doing, and, and connect and, and connect them with additional resources that they need. Because that, that kind of community-level work is really what, what it is that is going to connect with these families, as Council President was talking about, right? The folks in the community connecting with these kids and trying to protect them where they can. At any rate, thanks. I just want to say that.
If nothing else, we need a motion to excuse the absent member, approve the minutes, and adjourn the meeting.
Still moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.